Thank you.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Call this meeting of the Montague County Commission of Order. It is Wednesday, December 4th, 10:00 a.m. Eastern Standard Time. Let the record reflect that all three commissioners are present. First item on the agenda is consent approval with our county administrator, Renata McClure. Welcome back.
Thank you.
Good morning, Renata.
Good to be back. You have seven exonerations for $2,936.98 minutes for November 20th, 2024. We'll have two sets of vouchers, ones from the ones that were approved last week by the president, and then we'll have this week's. So you have general county vouchers. I'm going to read everything from last week first, and I'll go back. From November 25th, General County, $56,361.97. Chestnut Ridge Park, $1,005.8017. Camp Muffley, $780. Mason Dixon Park, $807.91. Mon County Center, $5,345.20. Cecil's valuation, $345.31. Purchasing card vouchers, General County, $27,514.67. 911, $359.09. Home confinement, $38. Cecil's valuation, $95.45. For a total of $93,227.77. From this week, you have General County regular vouchers, $113,351.97. Chestnut Ridge Park, $1,028.60. Mon County Center, $882.62. Payroll, $1,149,635.42. Purchasing card, General County, $7,884.12. Magistrate Court, $17.74. Chestnut Ridge Park, $793.27. Camp Muffley, $152.96. Mason Dixon Park, $76.48. Mon County Center, $139.19. For this week's total of $1,274,221.37. And that equals between both weeks, $1,367,449.14. No budget revisions to approve. Physician vacancies for boards and authorities are listed on the county website, and fiduciary orders for December 4th, 2024.
Motion to approve the consent agenda items as presented?
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor signify by saying aye?
Aye.
You have one additional fiduciary item. It's an objection to the final settlement in the estate of John Raymond Craynen.
What is the role of the commission on this item?
We had a hearing. Beth Umina had a hearing on this matter. The creditor did not respond to the request for hearing. It hasn't presented anything other than the initial claim. It's her recommendation that we approve the proposed final settlement filed by the administratrix and deny the creditors' claim. And I would move that we take those recommendations and do just that.
I second.
Okay. All those in favor signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Any other fiduciary items? Introduction to new employee personnel changes, Youth Services Center?
You actually have two, two new hires. First is Sarah Dunn. She is a part-time relief worker, would be on a, obviously, part-time, on-call basis, not eligible for benefits. The starting rate is $14.40 per hour, and today is her first day.
So moved.
Okay.
Second.
All those in favor signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Sorry, I thought we were going to do both at the same time.
I should have.
Okay, I didn't really.
Emmanuel Tolliver is the second part-time relief worker. All the same, is applicable, on-call basis, not eligible for benefits. $14.40 per hour, and today is his first day of employment.
Move to approve the employee as presented?
Second.
All those in favor signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Any additional?
Okay. Oops, sorry.
Comments from the public? We'll now open the comments from the public session of the meeting. Anybody wishing to be heard, please raise their hand and come forward. Good morning.
Good morning.
You know I'm not going to miss you guys. Mary Ann Foles, 828 Bloody Run Road. I'm not, I might be moving. Anyway, unfortunately, not in the county. I'm sure you guys love to see me disappear. But here's how you can disappear. Let's work on fixing some of these problems, and then I'll start coming. The one I want to talk about today is Health Right. We, I've talked about this one before. I know that you all have to approve them on an annual basis. The city has to approve them on an annual basis. I used to be 100% against the light program. I now see that there's value in it in terms of, you know, we don't want to have an HIV outbreak like Charleston had. So I see, see how that can, can value, can add value to some people's lives. However, I do think that we need to put some stipulations on some of the things that they're doing. I do know they're going to put in more security up at Scott Avenue. I think that's, that's very good. I know that they're saying that they're going to have a one-to, that they have a one-to-one exchange. I think we need to keep encouraging that, make that a stipulation of approving their, their continued program. And, and then what I would love to see is to have more counseling for the folks who are using that light program. I mean, it's the best opportunity that we have to bring people together who can help addicts and people who are addicts together to try to encourage more of them to get help. You know, I think there were 10 out of, I don't know, 450 people last year that got help. That's a pretty low number. I think if we can work with the folks at Health Right and get, you know, get that to be a stipulation of that program, I think that would add a lot of value, both for the businesses that are either downtown or up at Scott Avenue, as well as the individuals who are coming in to get that service. So I'm asking for that. Travel contin, I mean, transportation continues to be an issue for people who are walking on Grafton Road up to the Ramada Inn area, the old Ramada Inn. I see people every night, you know, 10, 11, 12 o'clock, driving or walking along Grafton Road, and it is, continues to be really dangerous. So I don't know, I don't know if there's anything you can do about that, but the, the problem persists that there are people who are downtown that are going up to that area and, and walking along the side of the road in the dark. So that's, I think that's my topic for the day. Only other thing I would say is, couple, I don't know, probably a month ago, I asked to have a committee on homelessness. I did check into that. There's nothing that exists today. There used to be, but that's been disbanded. I would still like to see if we can have a counting level committee that would involve people from, from both the, you know, one or two people from city council if they want to attend, maybe one of you want to attend, and then get some of the social services together. This is not, not asking you to be in social service. I'm just asking you to help, help the social services work together, help them coordinate some of their activities, some of their needs. Transportation in general is in need for all of them. That's not getting addressed, and they've got other issues as well that, you know, they could benefit by working together, but they just don't have that forum. So I'm asking again, I would be glad to head it up. I'd be glad to, to make that something that helps our whole community. Thank you for your time.
Thank you very much. Okay. Anyone else? Seeing none, I'll go ahead and close the comments on the public session of the meeting. Okay, I apologize. Next item on the agenda is grants with our commission office manager, Colleen Kuhn.
Morning.
Good morning.
Good morning. I have a request for reimbursement for the Community Development Block Grants. It is in the amount of $1,962.24.
Move to approve the president signing the grant document as requested?
Second.
Okay. All those in favor signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Thank you. Next item on the agenda is the correspondence. Letter of appreciation from Circuit Court Judge Paul Gwaltney. Pretty much self-acknowledatory. He's wishing county employees and families a happy holiday season and wanted to express his appreciation for the employees that he's worked with. Do we have any other correspondence?
Yeah, actually, yesterday I did receive a press release from Visit Mount Air Country Convention and Visitors Bureau regarding the Peak Health Aquatic Center would, is going to be hosting the 2025 USA Diving American Cup. And that is June 12th through the 15th.
That was the one item I was going to bring up. So we, any other correspondence?
No, thankfully.
No, sir.
No.
This item is unfinished business. We have none new business. Consideration of request for disbursement of $13,072.70 from the County Fire Protection Contingency Fund for the Scots-run Volunteer Fire Department.
Move to approve the request. This is from the state fire fee funds that we are administering. This is from our contingency fund, and this was the first request of that fund. And it was approved by the, and recommended by the Volunteer Fire Department Association as we've requested them to review these requests and send us recommendations based upon the review. And based on that, I'd move that we approve it and authorize the funding.
Second, now I don't have to have discussion because you said everything we wanted to say.
Yeah, the only thing that was missing was that this is for the repair of the fire service pump on their ladder truck.
A ladder for you, which they use for not just their calls, but they, they respond to every call. Pretty much every department utilizes that ladder with their.
So we have a first and a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye?
Aye.
And the way that works is they'll, the association will bill us, they'll, they'll incur the charges, and we'll, we'll pay the association. The association will reimburse them. Is that consistent with how we do those?
I don't think they, it was a reimbursement when we did the one for Star City earlier this year. I think it was paid upfront. But I can double-check that and report back to you next week. Do you want me to just follow the same process that we did with?
Sure, yeah.
Star City, however it worked out?
Reimbursement or upfront, however we do it. I was made concerned about who we pay.
Oh, we will definitely pay the fire association, and they will, they will submit a bill to, or submit a check to.
I believe they indicated that at the meeting we attended as well, that that's the way they were going to administer it on their end.
Yeah.
That the association would make the payment after we send it to them.
All right. So we did take a vote? Sorry, did we vote on? Okay, we have a first and a second?
We have a first and a second.
All those in favor signify by saying aye?
Aye.
To consider for approval, requisition number 34 for the Series 2021 B Harmony Grove Phase One Project Fund.
The requisition is for $132,246.14. Those funds will be paid out to Adrian Enterprises and Morgantown Utility Board for a waterline extension.
Move to approve payment of the requisition?
Second.
Okay. Yeah, and that breakdown is Adrian Enterprises, $30,102.246.14. We have a first and a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Aye. Okay. Consider for approval, Fund Dant Technology Subscription Contract Renewal for Grant Lifecycle Manager, Basic Two-Year Licensed Subscription.
So moved with discussions.
A second.
Just, you want to explain what it, what it is? Do we want Colleen? We'd have Colleen, since she's the one who runs the program. If that's okay.
Yeah, that's fine.
This program is for our grant process that we have online through the Foundant Technologies. We've used it for our regular county grant funding and also for our opioid funding grants. So.
It's the online portal.
It is the online portal, yes.
And it seems to really have worked and.
It has worked out certainly well.
Much better than what we've had in the past.
Yes, so.
And the pricing that's referenced, it's 8,500 for the next year, which is actually a decrease. Is that the next two years?
Next two years.
Next two years, which is a $2,000 decrease from the previous year because the first year had set up in training.
It had the training in it, so.
And it is an invaluable tool for use in our grant process.
Absolutely.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
So we have a first and a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Okay. Is there any other new business?
No.
Okay. Reports from elected officials and/or department supervisors?
May I ask, oh, the mayor to get up for one second? I'll tell you why. I was having lunch over in Granville, and everyone was asking me, what's the update on the lights over by the University Town Center? And I couldn't give a real good answer, so I was asking you if you could say it again so I can pass on that information to the businesses that were right there. I apologize.
Absolutely. Our poles are in, in progress. They're, they're manufacturing the poles, which was good news because we didn't think that they would be in production until maybe in January. So it seems like they're going to be in sooner than we expected. This week, they were to start preparing the pads to set the poles, and so I hope the weather cooperates. I know that the equipment's up there. We got a notice about lane closure, you know, to alert our PD for traffic issues, obviously. So it is moving along. It's slow, but we are moving along.
Thank you, because they were all asking, and I was like, I'm really sorry, I don't know. Thank you.
Thanks, Mayor.
Sorry.
Good morning, Alex.
Good morning.
Alex Holler, Control Officer. You all will be glad to know that I was not selected to be the new WVU head football coach. I will be around for a little while. I kind of wanted to touch on a couple different things, mainly about recycling. So the first thing is that, as you all know, we put up cameras probably this time last year. And what we've noticed is that when we close specifically on days when it's not pre-scheduled, we have people who are breaking into the recycling center to recycle, which is a little bit different of an issue than we were having before where they were just piling stuff up outside, but they're actually climbing through the fence to use the recycling bins. So we're probably going to look into maybe, we had talked about replacing that fencing at one point, where there have been some incidents, and putting up some more cameras to kind of capture more angles. So we're working on that. Now on to the more important thing. I know WAJR published a story about it. Last November, Republic Services approached the Public Service Commission to increase their rates, something that we were affected by last November. Morgantown City has a municipal contract with them, so they're kind of locked in, but part of that is a provision that they have to renegotiate their contract in times like this, or they're supposed to. They approached them earlier this year, and due to a lot of service issues being brought up, they started, I guess, meeting monthly with them to try and figure some of these things out. At the Committee of the Whole Meeting last week on November 26th, Tom Berry, who's the general manager, was there with a few of his other associates. And he made a statement in response to a question that was asked by one of the council members that, you know, if we don't approve this increase or don't change our contract, what's going to happen? And I quoted what he said because it really disturbed me when I heard it. "I can't say in the long run that the transfer station will continue to operate at a loss of whether we would continue to operate that or not. If we did close, the waste would have to be taken out of state, and I don't know what would happen to some of our other options like recycling." And then he followed that up by saying that since these rate increases have been in effect, they have absorbed $250,000 in lost revenue from the city not increasing their rates. So essentially, what he's saying is that if Morgantown City doesn't increase their rates, that the transfer station, which is ran by our public services, a national company, is going to go under. Last night, the city council took it up at their council meeting. And something that I have, and over the past two, three years of watching city council of Morgantown and this commission, things often don't die for lack of a second, and that's exactly what happened last night. It wasn't even discussed. I regularly get calls about the level of services being provided by Republic. It is a weekly occurrence that someone's calling me saying that their trash is getting picked up, or that their neighbor's trash picked up and theirs wasn't. And then there's also the cases where neighbors call me because they think their neighbor doesn't have trash service, and I go out there, prepare to write a ticket, and they do have trash service, and it just hasn't been picked up in a couple months. So I understand where the city's coming from with not, you know, if we were in a position to not have to pay them more money, I don't see why we would at this point. But I say all that to say, I think it may be time for us to sit down and kind of discuss maybe ironing out some sort of contingency plan if they were to need to reallocate funds away from the recycling program that they run, or if they were to shut down the transfer station in general. I think we might need to sit down and have some sort of contingency plan set up for that. The closest other one that I know of is in Mount Morris, PA, and I don't know what regulations there are about transporting across state lines. But I think it's something that we may need to sit down and discuss. On a lighter note, the last thing is that I would encourage you all, the next time you have a chance to drive out Rockforge Lane. If it's something that you've done more than a year ago, you will remember that it was not pleasant to look at. And over this year, in 2024, the abandoned dilapidated board has worked with property that is there to demolish three houses there at the very front of Rockforge Lane off of Rallcore and remediate another property that ran around the right-hand turn. So it looks like an entirely new neighborhood when you pull in there. There's obviously still some things we're working on, but I would encourage you, if you get a chance to drive out there and just take a look and see what the board has been able to do over the last year.
Great. Quick questions. Let me get this clear. City residents are calling you about Republic's not picking their trash up?
So city residents have called and said that their trash is getting picked up, just sort of because when you Google that issue.
Which is out of your purview.
It's out of, yeah, correct. That all falls.
So I was confused when you were saying you were going out to write a ticket, because that wouldn't be in your purview.
That would be more a Cheat Lake area.
So, correct. If I get a call in the city of Morgantown that would relate to something like that, that's a, more so a code enforcement issue, who I kind of directed to. There has been a few instances where they or the Morgantown Police have asked me to come in on an issue, just because I deal with this stuff every day, whereas they have 17 different hats to wear. But typically, yeah, the calls I'm getting are for, I speak in general when I say, the services of Republic countywide. Sorry about that.
You saw the same thing I happened to watch, and I got immediately concerned when I saw that last night, where it died by a lack of a second, which means they weren't even dealing with it. And by not dealing with it is jeopardizing, and that's why I was concerned. Mr. Berry had also contacted me and said that if they don't get that increase, there is a real possibility that the transfer station, they would just stop doing the transfer station. And you are correct. I am worried. I mean, I know they had a contract, but at the same time, you have to either do it or not, you know, you have to make a decision one way or the other. You are correct. I don't know what we would do, and I don't want to move forward in spending a lot of hours planning if it doesn't happen, but at the same time, if we don't and it happens, so I'm not too sure about that. That's, you bring up a good point that we probably have to look at, because that may happen in the near future anyway.
Well, and the point is, we want to be careful. We're not sitting here critiquing the city's decisions and the city's contractual relationships we are, we are not privy to.
Correct.
But it would be a catastrophic effect on our county if the transfer station.
Yeah, I have no opinion on if the city should have passed it or if they shouldn't have passed it. These are just kind of the things that I have, I took out of those last two meetings about it and wanted to make you all aware of, that, you know, these things are going on, and that it's something I think we may, should.
I do appreciate that, Alex. Maybe what might be appropriate is, you know, if commissioner or one of us would have a conversation with the city manager or their designee, just to make sure that we can be part of the conversation.
Okay, that's a good idea.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Reports from county commissioners. Tom?
Yes. A couple things. Mary Ann, you did bring up two issues. First of all, I know about the Committee of the Homelessness. You say it's not there, but there really is. In fact, I'm going to invite you. You're more than welcome. There's a downtown drug and safety meeting, which has roughly 35, 40 individuals that has, is an offshoot of that. So that is the area that it's now gone into. And that is the meeting tomorrow from 3:00 to 4:00, Thursday, right? Yeah. 3:00 to 4:00 p.m. across the street from, with the map building. So I did want you aware of that. The other thing is, and now I know it sounds semantics, but the city and the county does not approve Health Right, but we are requested to recommend support. And there is a little bit of a difference along those kind of lines. And President Sikora had talked to the two of us and discussed to review because they may be coming, well, we know they will be coming before us, and we are each, we haven't met yet to discuss that, but there are some things, and I do have some suggestions, but I don't want to make it public without the commissioners agreeing to it. But you are correct. I am very, very concerned about that. So I appreciate that. And the final thing was, very excited that I was permitted, well, honored, I should say, to represent Mon County at the CCA WV Leadership Academy. That was at the Hotel Morgan, Sunday through Tuesday. And then I was asked to speak about the essentials of county government, which I was doing great until the city administrators walked in, and I had to be very careful what I said. No, they were, they gave me sure that I stayed on task. Because I sometimes go off on a tangent, you know, sometimes.
You mean our, the county administrator?
County administrator, did I say city?
Yeah.
Oh, my gosh. See, I, wow, okay. I apologize. No wonder you gave me the look. Okay, the county administrator, I'm really sorry about that. But there were some really neat issues. I mean, there's 29 new county commissioners, and I, and I don't know if you know, but I received about a half a dozen emails and questions already about what we do. And the state association was very positive about our county and what we do and suggestions and so on. And there was a number of areas. One, which was really interesting, dealing with the press, which I thought was exceptional. And the other was, and I'm going to bring this up, about nepotism and to be very careful. And they have brochures on that, and I'm, I'm going to talk to the other commissioners that maybe we need to pass that on to our elected officials, because there's some really unique rules that I didn't understand about nepotism and things that, I mean, just because you live in the house doesn't mean if it's nepotism, if you have your own job and you're separate. It was really interesting. So I think it's just something that I think we need to make aware. But it was an excellent conference, and I want to thank the two commissioners for allowing me to go there, and I thought it was really, really good for Mon County.
Thanks, Tom.
Just a few things. Was out all last week, but things are revving up this week. Had a MCR board meeting yesterday, Main Street, Morgantown meeting tomorrow. Would like to touch on Judge Gwaltney's letter and just express my personal appreciation to his job that he's done on the bench since he was appointed. He's been a breath of fresh air. He's always on time, prepared, and doing his job very well. And sorry to see him go, although I am excited for, for Mr. Sims Michael to take over. I think he'll be a great jurist as well. So that's just on a personal level. I'd like to thank Judge Gwaltney for, for his service up to this point. So that's all I've got. Sean?
Though we were out last week, it still has been a busy couple of weeks, going back from, since the past meeting. That Thursday, Tom and I spoke to the leadership Mon. Tom and I spoke to the leadership Mon cohort. And then that afternoon, we had interviews with the three respondents to our broadband R, expansion RFP and then we had an MMPO meeting that night. And then the following Friday, we had, uh, my normal two-week, uh, call with Comcast. Last week was a light week because of the holiday, but we did have a, a very long broadband meeting on Wednesday. Obviously, the rest of the week was a holiday. This past Monday, we had a broadband call and then yesterday, I spent, um, four hours driving the county to do a site visit to all of the locations. I appreciate the support from, uh, our nine-one-one staff, specifically, uh, Mike Portney, who I gave him a call on Friday and said, here, I'm gonna send you all these GIF, uh, GIS files, or I'm sorry, KMZ files, and I want you to plan a visit that's can, we can get done in four hours. Because I got four hours that I can give you to do that. So I met Mike, uh, at, at the Glenn Mark Lowe's and we went around and visited each of the sites and it helped inform some of the, some of the preliminary decisions in regards to the recommendations to the commission. So it was very helpful. Today's a regular day. This afternoon, I have a meeting with the Audit Committee and then I have another broadband call. And then this evening, I have a reception for, uh, a celebration of NETL's twenty-fifth anniversary. Tomorrow, they're having the formal, uh, event, uh, with a lot of, uh, officials and stuff that will be there, but it's hard to, people think, well, DOE's been there forever. Yeah, but we've only been a national lab. We became the seventeenth national lab, uh, twenty-five years ago. And it's, uh, it's, it's the site, uh, what it has done as far as the prominence of our local, DOE location has been tremendous. Uh, and our, our little jewel here in Mon County is, uh, is something that's, uh, valued across the whole country. We're, we're the only, um, lab that isn't run by a university. It's a government-owned contractor-operated, uh, uh, lab. So, um, I'm, I've been out there for thirty-one years, uh, so it's hard to, it seems like it's, uh, just yesterday, but, um, I'm interested in participating in those events. Also Thursday, we have our Partnership Executive Committee. I have another round of broadband calls, uh, and then we have our quarterly jail bill meeting. Friday, we have staff reports and I believe we have a call with our fleet vendor?
A potential new fleet vendor if they.
Well, with a potential fleet vendor that may be interested in bidding on the work when we put it out to bid.
Yes.
Okay, so. And then our, um, I have another broadband call. One thing that I did do on Monday, as you referenced, Tom, uh, I did have a long conversation with Dr. Huggins of the Health Department regarding, uh, Health Rights Light Program, so I have some input from them and I was surprised that we pretty much agree on a lot of the things we talked about. Anthony Deefalise and, uh, Dr. Huggins called me after I requested to talk to them and we, we spoke for about an hour on the subject, so, um, I'll update you guys in staff reports on that as far as my thoughts as far as that program going forward. But we, we have been, we have been looking at the information that Health Rights sent us and, and carefully, uh, evaluating each of our input for, um, a response to their request for a letter of support. Other than that, I do not have anything else. I have a motion to adjourn.
So move.
Second.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Or adjourn.